Facilities, amenities. And so the goal was to come up with a plan to address those issues. And normally you would go through a complete parks master plan process, which is can be somewhat more involved and more costly. But what we decided to do is address some of the more immediate needs through what we call a park strategic plan, which was much more focused on first fixing what needs to be fixed in your existing parks before looking outward and trying to add new parks to the system. So you always want to take care of your own things first and then and then look forward to future growth of your park system as time goes on. Let's take a moment. So the overall goal of the plan is to create a network of safe, accessible, vibrant parks that promote the health and wellness and community engagement and here in Cleveland. And the overall goal of that, that mission is to enhance quality of life for your whole community. That means developing new parks and maintaining existing ones and providing a rich array of activities and opportunities for residents. Well, as I mentioned, the city has grown significantly. You're looking at 22% growth between 20 and 2023. That's remarkable. With that comes the need for more parks. While some of that development is private, homeowners associations offering amenities, those don't feel necessarily accessible to residents that already live in here. So you need something that is for all Cleveland residents. And we'll see here in a minute, we did an analysis of where everybody lives in relation to parks through what's called a 10-minute walk analysis. It's a challenge that was created by the National Park Association and the Trust for Public Land. And what that does is say, well, how much, look at how many of your residents live within a 10-minute walk of a park? That's about a quarter mile. And the results of this analysis proved that only 25% of residents live within a 10-minute walk of a park. So that's something to consider moving forward when it when it comes time to look for where to put new parks in the community. So the overall process, we first start with looking at all your existing parks and amenities and facilities. And we also do an inventory of all the offerings that are provided by non-city entities such as it could be private gyms, it could be school district, it could be yoga studios, you name it, boxing gyms, all kinds of different ways that people are getting their recreation. In some cases, even private soccer fields in the area. And so those are part of your recreation environment as well. And those are things that y'all don't have to always necessarily provide. So you're not looking to duplicate what's already been met in terms of need. And then we performed a needs analysis. This is a combination of looking at the results of the inventory, looking at our observations of where opportunities are, and then engaging the public in finding out what they would like to see. So for stakeholder engagement, we provided an online survey, and we'll get into the results of that here shortly, and then took all of the results of that and all the other observations we've made and came up with a list of recommendations that are actionable. Some of them are lower hanging fruit, some of them might be a little more costly elements, but there are opportunities to make real change in your park system. So as I mentioned, the park feature inventory, so you can see your city, most of your city limits here, and you've got, most of your parks are in the core of town, and you've got a large city limits. So and there's growth happening out to the east and, or excuse me, to the west and some to the northeast and eventually heading south as well. So there's plenty of opportunities in the future to look for some new park land. We'll just go ahead and skip past this slide. Here's an example that are the results of that 10-minute walk analysis that we conducted. And you'll see on the map on the right, there's all the purple areas. Those are areas where the most need for park space is. And those are areas where they're furthest away from the parks. And there's also some background information in that analysis that looks at some other demographic factors and says, well, what's your density? Where's your, you know, if there's sort of poverty levels or, you know, other age factors that can result in a need for more park land in the area. In comparison to other communities across the state, you see Cleveland at the top there with 25% of residents living within a 10-minute walk of a park. But you see a wide range across Texas. So you're not the only ones dealing with that. And part of that is just growth. And so we'll look to that in the future as how you can find more park space. So in the demand analysis, I mentioned the online survey. We had a total of 213 responses over the two months that that survey was running. It sounds low, but it's it's still a significant amount of information that was gathered, especially some of the more qualitative information that we gained from open-ended questions where people were able to write out what they would like to see. Because sometimes you can't always know what question, what questions to ask in the community. So letting them tell us what they wanted was helpful. And then we got a lot of information from city staff through a workshop that we did at the beginning of this process. And the bottom line is there's, there's a need for a lot of different types of recreation in the community. And that's the challenge is how to get that. And when we look at the statistics, you're looking at about an 86% confidence interval for the, for the overall survey sample with a 6.6% margin of error, which is not bad. And the only way to get that would be to just get more people to participate. So we do encourage future surveys. You know, this is an ongoing conversation with the public is a great way to keep them engaged and keeping that your finger on the pulse of like changes in recreation demand over time. The top items that were requested for future parks and amenities, hiking bike trails were the highest on the list at 45%. Swimming pool, which I know the last one went away some time back, but there still is apparently a demand for a swimming pool. Playgrounds, so more playgrounds throughout the community. And sometime in the future, some type of an indoor recreation, whether it could be a recreation center in the traditional sense or more of an indoor gathering space with multipurpose rooms that could be adapted to a lot of different indoor activities. It could be club meetings, it could be yoga classes, it could be a wide range of things. So looking at some type of indoor space for recreation, especially during the heat of the summer. And then outdoor fitness space came up high on the list as well, and we'll be addressing that later. So other important key elements that when we looked at asking them to rate the importance on a scale of one to five of things they'd like to see, sidewalks came up high at 65%. Recreational programming and community events was also high at 52%. And then again, hiking bike trails. So those were rated as very important to residents. And the most requested programs and events, and this was an open-ended question, we're just asked what type of things they'd like to see, festivals and seasonal events was high up there along with some possible recreation fitness programs that could be, that did include pools, gyms, yoga, running groups, those type of activities. Youth and family programs that that does include sports leagues, but also other activities for children, some of that which is being met by the library, actually. And music and concerts and farmers markets. So a diverse range of things that people would like to participate in the community. And just a long list of other things that people were interested in seeing happen in the park system. Again, you see public pool, water parks, shade around the playgrounds. We see more and more of that in every community working. Better maintenance and safety overall. There was some comments about wanting to see Stansel Park refreshed. More sports facilities, especially for older teens, older kids and teens. And that's, that's the gap in the most park systems is what to do with teenagers. You know, there's always playgrounds. Of course, there's programmed activities like sports and things like that. But what else is there for teenagers? And so looking at opportunities to solve that need, walking and running tracks with lighting and indoor recreation. And then some other interesting things like native gardens and more youth activities and more communication about events and activities going on in the community. And this is, and I don't know why every other line decided to turn around on me, but hiking bike trails was at the top of the list, as you see. And we mentioned the top items here in a couple of slides back, playgrounds, outdoor fitness space. And then you can see even items like amphitheaters. A rodeo arena was discussed in there, 4% of comments on that. Story trails, which I learned about from your staff, actually, where it's a library-type activity where you can, with a book exchange. And then softball fields and adaptive play equipment. So that's inclusive play, that's things that people with all abilities can have access to and miscellaneous other items. Let's go to the next slide. And as mentioned earlier, when we rated, asked them to rate hiking bike trails on a scale of one to five, significant portion of the responses were in favor of important to very important. And then sidewalks also came high on the list. In fact, 65% of responses said those were important. And this is important because when looking at your community, trails are really hard to do in some areas because, and then we talked early on with staff about utilizing the many alleys in the community. But in a lot of cases, the alleys have been taken over by yards. They've got their outbuildings in there, they've, they've become part of their landscape. And some of, a lot of these alleys don't necessarily connect, but traditional sidewalks might be a more appropriate solution for meeting some of that need throughout the community in the future. And then a lot of the other corridors that are potentially available are going to be utility easements, drainage corridors, pipeline right-of-ways. All of those have their own challenges with getting access. So we think sidewalks has a strong chance. And really, what that looks like for success depends on how wide the sidewalk is. And so taking advantage of, especially on major corridors, wider sidewalks, not just the standard five feet, but considering eight feet or wider, makes them much more of a recreational opportunity than than the traditional sidewalks that you see in most communities. And so when asked what residents would like to see the city do for future parkland, hiking bike trails was at the top of the list. Community parks, large, larger parks, 15 acres and larger, swimming pool, recreation center, and then smaller neighborhood parks in the zero to five acre range. Event space came up on the list at 31%. We'll look at opportunities for how to resolve that. And then natural areas and a list of many other things that people are interested in. Diverse range of interest in the community. And when asked if residents would be willing to support a municipal bond to fund such new development of new parks and facilities, remarkably, the majority came up on the side of likely or very likely to. So that's food for thought. It might be a question you might ask again, should you decide to chase down a bond election in the future, just to kind of gauge the, you know, sentiments as things move forward. But clearly, people are interested in some recreation improvements in the community. And so that's reassuring. So ultimately, it came down with a series of recommendations for improvements to your park system. Sam Wiley Park appeared to us as a great opportunity to refresh a park and move things in that direction. Currently, the park is fenced off all the way around. It limits opportunities for things like trails, you know, because the sports fields are right up to the edge and the fences right up, actually next to some gravestones on the west side. And it kind of blocks off the north part of the park from the rest of the park. It feels like they're two separate parks almost. And so the concept here was to open up that, remove the fences and put loop trail around the park and make it much more usable for one of the things people like the most, which is apparently trails in your community. Refreshing the playgrounds, all the playground structures out there are pretty old. Some of those are probably older than me. And so giving that a refresh is a great opportunity. Your pavilions are in overall good shape. The large pavilion down south could really use a fresh coat of paint, basically, but it's a solid structure, it's a well-used structure, as well as the covered basketball pavilion. Those are great amenities. We see keeping those moving forward. Citizen comments about the restroom was they'd like to see that replaced or potentially refurbished. And I think there's, it's a great opportunity there. And the baseball field is still an active field, and so we don't recommend removing that. We recommend actually just regrading the field and making sure everything's in good working order. Your bleachers are in nice shape, you know, it's still, people are still out there using it on a regular basis. And so that's, we saw this as a great opportunity to just make that park feel new again. So overall opinion of probable cost for renovation of the entire park ranges from 1.17 million to 1.3 million. This is a pretty detailed opinion of cost. So you can see we've got contractor markup and contingencies included in that. And so we feel that's a solid number that you can use to plan a budget should you decide to go down that road. But it's also itemized so that you can look at piecemeal or à la carte approach to addressing issues as you see fit. Other park improvements, Campbell Park is, you've already started some progress on there. I know you've got the, y'all put the splash pad in not that long ago. And the new skate park is a great addition to the park system. And we looked at other opportunities to solve some of those needs. So you'll see on the top right corner, you see the overall map of the park. And that red circle is around the area where you've got the old pool house there, and then you've, with the restrooms, and then you've got a large lawn area in the front. And you've got a lot of parking because it used to be a pool there. So you do have the splash pad, which is still a very popular spot. And then now the skate park. So I don't necessarily say remove any of the parking because you could regret that in the end. And then you've got the overall park space with the trails and picnic areas and playgrounds that are in, they're nice already. So we saw an opportunity to just add some more recreation to that site. And one of the things that came up high on the list was outdoor fitness equipment. They can take many forms, either they can be individual pieces that you put along a trail throughout the community, or it could be part of a unified kind of all-in-one-place fitness center. And we looked at the National Fitness Campaign, which is a great opportunity. They have a grant program, which is nice. And they put these, these systems in communities. It's a, it's a complete fitness system in one. It's got all your equipment on one pad with instructions, and it's got little QR codes that'll walk you through the steps. And, and they're, they're really a type of fitness equipment that people of all ages and abilities can use. And so we thought we'd include that as an opportunity because you can rapidly add an attraction to your parks and get things moving. Also, when it comes time to replace the playground in that park, we'll get at possibly considering an all-abilities playground. Now, the way these are set up is instead of having the traditional little ring with the mulch in there, which works, which is going with something that is much more approachable. And it can be a variety of surfaces. It could be a poured-in-place rubberized surface, or it could be some of the artificial turf surfaces. But what it does is allow you to have an easy to, to access play area. And that can, whether it's approaching the actual play equipment or getting to picnic areas circulating throughout that playground and having it with adequate shade and then appropriate structures in there that can accommodate people of all abilities, whether they're in a wheelchair or they have, maybe they, their sensory equipment to help people with various other disabilities, whether it's sight or hearing issues. And there's, there's a lot of new technology in the world of play equipment that can really open up the playground to a larger audience. Now, Old City Park was another one that we saw some opportunities for improvements. And they recently had a new play structure in there, and that's the first step. You've still got some old equipment in there that is really time to replace. Some of it's still functional and some of it is, you know, the tree fell on a picnic table, that one's ready to go. There's a few things like that that could be replaced that would greatly enhance the experience there. And then, of course, the restroom, it's just outdated. And, and I think, I think it's a, it's a, it would be a sad thing to remove the bathroom, the restroom from the site because people still depend on that there, especially with small children playgrounds and bathrooms go hand in hand. Because often if there's not a bathroom within 500 feet of a playground, it becomes a challenge for young children. So updating play equipment, replacing the furnishings like picnic tables and benches, considering renovation or replacement of the restroom are the big ticket items. And then updating the basketball court. The goal's kind of beat up and rusty and the court, the court needs resurfacing, which can be done, it doesn't have to be replaced. And then, last but not least, is providing access to all those features. So right now, there's some, there's limited pathways to get to the individual items, whether it's play structures or basketball court or what have you. And so adding some pathways to connect to all the individual pieces. One, it'll, it'll help you with overall accessibility, not just the regulatory through the American Disabilities Act program, but, but just to make it a much more approachable park. There is some elevation changes as you come in from the south side of the park, and there's a little drop-off there. So trying to fix the pathways to make it more accessible to people is our recommendation. And then at Cleveland Municipal Park, we see some opportunities. The concept drawing you see right there on the right was one that we developed in 2011 when we were first working with y'all to, to get this park built. And so you can see that covers the entire entirety of the property there. Now, y'all have already developed the first phase, which was your baseball complex and one football field and all the associated amenities with that. You know, you're playing, you've got a playground, you've got concessions and restrooms and parking, much needed. There's still an opportunity to meet some demand that isn't being taken care of in Cleveland, like soccer. You have a, you have a growing demographic that's interested in soccer, there's a demand for soccer, and you've got space out there. Now, this is floodplain land, so that does need to be taken into consideration with some things. Most of it's not in the floodway, just along that. If you look at the bottom left of the screen, you'll see that red and blue stripe, that's the regulatory floodway. That's the area that you really can't put anything in. But everything that's in blue is still up for grabs. So there's, there's an opportunity to take advantage of that. And there might need to be some fill dirt in some areas for any structures, but sports fields, they can do well in that environment. And, and with some, moving around the dirt in some other areas, you can, you can get the adequate drainage to, to make that a safe and usable park and not lose anything to flood losses. So we encourage you to consider looking at that park property for, for programmed athletics, like, like multipurpose sports fields for soccer. It could be also used for expansion of the football program or lacrosse or whatever comes along next and as, as demand changes. In this concept, you can see that there's also some more parking and circulation in playgrounds and picnic areas that are included in there. And so just food for thought. And then last but not least was Austin Memorial Library. I know not too long ago, y'all fenced off that little section of grass that was on the west side of the library, or well, southwest side of the library. And, and it occurred to us that this is a great opportunity for an outdoor learning environment. And it doesn't have to be all about learning, it can also be a hangout space. There's some great things you can do with an outdoor environment, especially with a library there where you can, you can move out temporary book stands that come out and during the day and go back in in the evening. You can have seating areas with all-weather furniture. Nowadays, outdoor, all-weather game tables are available. These are poured in cast concrete, super durable, things like ping pong tables, foosball tables, chess tables that you can have out there to make it a place where people just want to come and gather and hang out. And this is one of those things that helps with inclusivity because you're, you're attracting an audience that, that maybe doesn't want to play on a playground or they're not into sports. Older generations and teenagers, they're looking for places as well to, to gather and hang out and enjoy each other's company and, and maybe read a book. So we just saw an opportunity here and couldn't pass it up because the library is a key component of your recreation program. And then we looked at funding opportunities. Of course, you know, municipal bonds are always an option, and they are supported by residents that took the survey. State and federal grants, there's a lot of those out there, community development block grants. One of the most important ones is the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grants, which are in part funded by state funds, but also federal funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program. That, they go up to $750,000 for a local parks grant right now. Those are 50/50 match grants. It's a great way to kickstart a program. Some of the things you might want to consider with that or any other grant that you apply for is submitting your plan to Texas Parks and Wildlife, for instance, and they will accept that. And then they know that you're interested in recreation and that you've been reaching out to the public to find out what they want, because nowadays, that's the most important thing to them. Unlike in the past where maybe it was all about the wildlife or, you know, communities would try to put butterfly gardens and green space and things like that and to try to, to win the grant. Nowadays, they want to know what the public wants. If the public wants sports fields, that's what they give them. That's what they're going to score you on. So they don't, they don't want to fund things that are not desired by residents. So just something to consider. Of course, you have hotel motel occupancy tax funds that could be used for things that might be attractive to outsiders coming to visit your community. And then the EDC can fund a various number of different types of projects. It's a great resource. And then a parkland dedication ordinance, that's something that y'all might want to consider. So the way those work is, ordinance is in place that says that a community, a developer must dedicate some amount of parkland in order to meet the growing needs. So if, as new residents come in, it increases your demand for park space. And that should be borne by the developer and the new residents, not by the old residents. And so, okay, the state law has allowed for these to occur. And all that needs to happen is it needs to be a fair and equitable amount of parkland that needs to be dedicated. So that's based on your current service, the current number of parks per thousand population that you have in your community. And then the, there's an option for a fee in lieu of dedication of parkland. Because sometimes what the developer might have left over to dedicate as a park isn't necessarily what you want. You don't want floodplain land, you don't want little narrow strips of unusable property. And so you can have an option for them to dedicate a fee instead of parkland, which you can then use for acquiring and developing parkland elsewhere. So it's something to consider, and we can, I can provide your staff with the resources for that. Professor John Cropton, where at Texas A&amp;M, has done some lengthy studies on the effectiveness of those ordinances and, and how to draft them appropriately. Overall implementation, short term, in the next two years, is to improve your existing park facilities and look at partnership opportunities, whether that's with the private sector or school districts or other community partners that might be out there that are willing to participate in this. So sometimes fundraising is the real challenge, and there's nothing wrong with working together as a community. Once initial funding is available for next steps, we'll get expanding parks and amenities. This could be your bigger project, or it could be working on long-term connectivity throughout the community. Things like sidewalks and trails can work really well with your transportation program. Tech dot has a requirement now that they have to include alternative modes of transportation in every Tech dot project. So on your state highway, there's opportunities to, as road improvements need to happen, to apply for funding with the state and developing some of those pedestrian routes throughout the community. There's also grants through the state of Texas with their Transportation Set Aside Program that provide opportunities to make connections throughout the community and as well as the Safe Routes to School Program. So those are opportunities to, to get funding and make a project move forward. And the long term, completing new park developments, whether that's acquiring some new park land as it becomes available, and then, and then making sure you can fill in the gaps of where there's, where you need park space. And really, that's going to come down to where are the people going to be? And with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Sure.
[inaudible]
2014, I think, or 2012, when we built it.
So how accessible is that being [inaudible]? To believe with soccer fields, of the soccer fields that other man was [inaudible].
Well, so the regulatory floodway, you can't, the thing is, you can't change the flow and you can't change the amount of rainwater that's moving off of that property and into drainage corridors like creeks and rivers and whatnot. And so generally speaking, you don't move dirt in those areas. But the floodplain, which is the majority of the site, that's a hundred-year floodplain. All you have to do is make sure that structures are elevated above that floodline and electrical equipment, things like that is elevated above that floodline. And you still have to deal with, if you're putting in pavement, pavement or any other impervious surface, you have to make sure that you account for that so you're not increasing the amount of stormwater flowing off the site, just like any other property. It does get wet. Well, you see a lot of communities now that they're, they're building detention facilities with soccer fields in them. They're not, they might not be your pro-level soccer fields, but, you know, nicely graded. You crown the field in the middle and have channels along the edges of the detention pond, so they can serve double purposes there. If you do that, you still have to move a lot of dirt around, but there's a way to raise up a significant portion of that site out of the floodplain. And especially if you build the basin, you have dirt to work with, like a borrow pit. So something to consider.
what what comes into the ball, it's just a parker. If you were to burn, you'd get dirt to burn, move the water, fastly into the library. Is that still an option?
I'd have to talk to an engineer on that one. Um I'm not sure what the rules are. I'm I'm more of a planner than an engineer, so uh I'd I'd hate to uh steer on the wrong direction, but I'm sure there's a a solution to to re-engineering the site to avoid issues. Um you know, there's a there's plenty of parks that are built on a hundred-year floodplain. And so um the devil's in the details, right? And so, but it's something worth studying, um because you've got a lot of parkland, land's not getting cheaper. And um y'all, most of the city-owned land that's undeveloped throughout the community is either in a really weird spot or it's little small parcels scattered on. You've got a lot of little shotgun lots scattered around. And one, that might be a resource, consider liquidating some of those and turning that cash into money to go buy a better piece of land. Um but um taking advantage of existing parkland is a great opportunity.
Okay, all right, sir. Well, we appreciate your uh presentation. And once again, I'd like to thank the uh uh Parks and Recreation Committee for your time and efforts that you've put in this past year. And and I encourage you to to keep up the the good work and what we're doing. And now we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the the joint workshop and we're gonna take like a five-minute break and then we'll get back into our regular monthly meeting. And uh thank you, sir, once again for your. Parks Recreation Ju- Joint Workshop, and we ran a little late. And uh we have everybody present at this uh time. Uh Ms. David will will not be here uh tonight, but we do have a quorum on hand. Uh to my left, your right will be uh Ms. Rachel Hall. And next to her will be our city attorney, uh Mr. Tommy Ramsey. And uh to my left will be Ms. Pam Harrison, our interim city manager. And before we go any further on that, uh this is be this will be her last night as interim. I just want to thank her uh for the last month and a half. And uh I told her earlier that it's time for me to decrease and time for the new people to to increase. So but we'll 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 get to some more of that later, but to my right, we have Ms. Juanita Lamont, our city secretary, uh Councilman Brent McWaters, and Councilman Roscoe Warwick, and uh Councilman Julius Buckley. Okay, our invocation tonight will be one of my old Cleveland high school buddies from the late seventies. Uh Pastor, the one and only Pastor Tommy Roberts of the Revel Lake Church here in Cleveland. Uh Pastor Roberts, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I appreciate that. I I don't know that you really needed to mention the the time we were. Thank you for that anyway. Would you join me in a word of prayer tonight? Father, we come before you with Thanksgiving tonight as we gather for the city council meeting. We praise and thank you for our salvation through Jesus Christ and we thank you for your absolute goodness toward us. We give you thanks and praise for our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, our council members and our first responders that give of themselves for the well-being and successful operation of our city. We thank you, Lord, for the great plan you have for the city of Cleveland. We thank you, Lord, for revival and the great awakening that you have planned for our region. We pray, Lord, that your kingdom would come to Cleveland as it is in heaven. We pray for your mighty power to work through these servants of our community and every decision they make. We pray for the unity of our leaders that command the blessings from heaven. May your truth be revealed and your light shine bright in our community through these anointed leaders. In your word, Lord, you declare that you give wisdom and it comes from your mouth, knowledge and understanding. And we ask you now, Lord, for the wisdom, the knowledge and the understanding to be upon this council to do what is right and good for all the citizens of Cleveland, Texas, according to your will. Lord, we pray that you will be glorified and lifted up through the decisions of this council tonight. May honoring you and doing your will be their highest calling and purpose. I declare the peace of God and the multiplied blessings of heaven upon these proceedings tonight and our city leaders, as well as those in attendance in this place, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you again, Mayor Lee.
Pastor.
Thank y'all.
I'd like for Ms. Rachel Hall to do our prayers for us tonight.
Uh please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay. Okay, item number three, I have some several uh proclamations and recognitions for uh different departments and just bear with me. Uh Ms. Juanita, you gonna keep me in order?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, City of Cleveland Proclamation. Whereas the profession of municipal clerks is essential to effective functioning local government in Texas, ensuring transparency, accountability, and a smooth operation of municipal services. And whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas Texas municipal courts have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality, impartiality while serving the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of the government at other levels. And whereas Texas municipal courts clerks serve as official record keepers, managing vital documents, conducting municipal elections, providing legislative support and ensuring compliance with laws and regulations in cities across Texas. And whereas municipal clerks demonstrate exceptional dedication, professionalism and integrity in their work, often going above and beyond to serve their communities and facilitate the effective governance of local governments. And whereas the Texas Municipal Clerks Association represents more than eleven hundred municipal clerks who contribute significantly to the success and the efficiency of local governments throughout the state of Texas. And whereas Municipal Clerks Week provides an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the invaluable work of municipal clerks, acknowledge their vital contributions, excuse me, to public service and highlight the important role they play in day-to-day operations of our cities. And whereas it is fitting that the city of Cleveland takes this opportunity to honor and thank all the municipal clerks of the city of Cleveland for their ongoing dedication, knowledge and tireless service. Now therefore, I, Danny Lee, mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth, twenty twenty-five as Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Cleveland and encourage all residents to recognize the important work of the municipal clerks of Cleveland and join in celebrating their contributions to our community. The fifty-sixth Annual Municipal Clerks Week, May fourth through the tenth, twenty twenty-five. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand, cause an official seal of Cleveland to be affixed. Uh Mayor Danny Lee, uh Jacqueline Cleveland, Deputy Secretary. And I just want to thank all of our clerks, each of you, for the work that you do. You know, you're more or less the heartbeat of City Hall, the heartbeat of the whole city. Uh here in the last two months, I've had a chance to to be around and witness the the job that you do. And you all are responsible for a whole lot and please stay with us. Because if I had to do it, we'd be in trouble. Thank you once again. Thank you, municipal clerks. Okay, moving right along. Got a few of them tonight. From the Office of the Mayor, City of Cleveland Proclamation, whereas in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and Calendar Week, which May fifteenth falls as National Police Week. Come on, officers. Cleveland finest.
That's right.
Y'all come on in here. Whereas the dedicated men and women of Cleveland Police Department dedicate themselves to protecting lives, property, rights of our residents, upholding the law with courage, integrity and professionalism. And whereas these officers serve as guardians of our community, responding to emergencies, fostering public safety and building trust through their commitment to justice and compassion. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties and responsibilities of their police department. And the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life, property, defending them against violence or disorder and guarding the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas our police department has grown to be a modern and well-served, well-respected law enforcement agency that is unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas US flags should be flown half-staffed on May fifteenth for Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all the fallen officers and their families. Now therefore, I, Danny Lee, mayor of Cleveland, Texas, join other cities by proclaiming May eleventh through May seventeenth as twenty twenty-five as National Police Week. And witness whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Cleveland, Texas, be affixed. Uh Jacqueline Cleveland, Deputy Secretary, and Danny Lee, Mayor. Uh thank you, Chief Bruce Art. Uh thank you, the the peace officers. Uh you know, you guys, uh you know, you greatly appreciate it, greatly needed here. And uh and I feel like, and I've been here a long time, and I feel like we have one of the finest uh law enforcement departments in the state of Texas. And uh I'm very proud of you guys and continue the work that we do. You know, people like me, I run away from trouble. Y'all run to trouble. And and uh it takes a lot of courage. Wish I had a little, little bit, chief, but. Okay, thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate you. Okay. Moving right along. Got another. City of Cleveland Proclamation, whereas public works professionals, come on, Mr. Brooks. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are vital importance to sustainable, resilient communities and to public help. Come on, Robert Melas. Come on in here, that's our that's our basketball player. Okay. Whereas the these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers and employees, all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protection protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and the children in the city of Cleveland to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works, public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American, excuse me, by the uh American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now, therefore, I, Danny Lee, mayor of the city of Cleveland, do hereby designate the week, May eighteenth through twenty-fifth, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens with representatives of the Me- American Public Works Association and governmental agencies, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, advancing quality of life for all. And witness whereof, I hereby to sit, uh unto set my hand, cause by the the official seal of the city of Cleveland to be affixed. Jacqueline Cleveland, Deputy Secretary, Danny Lee, Mayor. Uh Roger, uh I tell you all the time, uh I thank you guys, you know, for the work that you do. Uh a lot of people don't understand what these guys have to do. And we have a seventy-year-old infrastructure here in Cleveland. And we've added in the last eight to ten years, we've added over a thousand homes onto a seventy-year-old infrastructure that's already outdated. And these guys, a lot of nights when we sleeping, you know, they out there working. They out, I mean, uh uh the average person don't understand what you guys have to do, man. But I I know what you do and we appreciate you, you guys. Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Roger. Okay.
No, they're, they're, they're employee of the map.
Oh, okay.
Crew was, tell me.
Okay, y'all hold these up, and I'mma, I'mma go down the line. It's quicker. The ones that are here. Okay. To my, uh, right, I guess that'll be your left, Stephen Sykes, Saul Garcia, Thomas Watt. Once again, thank you guys for being out at twelve-thirty and one o'clock in the morning, you know, taking care of business. You know, people like me, I'm asleep, but y'all out there working. Robert, you've been here a long time. Robert is our superintendent, public work superintendent, and Roger is the manager. But thank you guys, and you all, all, all are appreciated. Okay, all right. Okay. Man, all these hidden in May. This is like a, a, a year's worth of awards. Okay. We have presentation of anniversaries. Jake Kelly, is he here tonight? Come on, Jake. Jake has been with us five years. Jake has put it on the line for five years. Come, come on here, Jake. Thank you, Jake. Thank you, thank you, man. Thank you. It's definitely an honor, man. Appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Jason Hill. Jason has been with us now for ten years. Oh, he's not here?
Jason's working the City Houston Fire Department tonight. He's part-time with us, he's been with us, uh, longer. He actually worked with us when we had the City of Cleveland EMS. He left for a short period, and he's been back for another ten years. He's a graduate of Cleveland, but he, he works for us part-time, and he's been very dedicated. We appreciate everything he does for us.
Okay, well, I'm gonna have to get by there and give him a good handshake.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill, and your absence. Okay, now we have Mr. Brian Harvey. Mr. Harvey has been with the city of Cleveland for fifteen years. Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Thank you, once again, and these firefighters, I have a lot of respect for. You know, I remember years ago, you know, years ago, Chief Bruce Art, I remember, that was my neighbor, but our house caught on fire one night, and as we was running out, the fire department was running in. So I know what you do, man. Appreciate, lot of courage. Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Cindy Crouch, she here? Twenty years. God bless you. God bless you. Come on here, get your. I want to present this to you. Cindy, I want to present this to you, and thank you for all your service. Twenty years, how about that? God bless you. God bless you. Thank you. She's the heartbeat of the police department. Bless you.
Amen. Amen. We appreciate you. Thank you so much. God bless you.
My work life.
Oh, more. Okay, man, I got, I wore my hands out. Last but not least, uh, this is a certificate of appreciation award given to, uh, Ms. Pamela Harrison. In recognition, sincere appreciation for your exemplary service and dedication as interim city manager for the city of Cleveland. Your leadership, professionalism, and commitment to public service during this transitional period has been invaluable. Your efforts have contributed significantly, significantly to the continuity and the stability of city operations and the well-being of our community. With gratitude and respect, we honor your contribution and commend you, your outstanding service. Pam, I told you earlier, I have really enjoyed, uh, these last couple of months, you know, getting the opportunity to, uh, see you demonstrate your abilities, you know, in management. And I, I've learned a lot from you, and I have a great respect for all of our department heads. I mean, this is, the last couple of months has been a good experience for me to just, you know, get behind the curtain and see exactly what everybody does day in and day out. And you done a good job, and I appreciate you. Thank you, Pam. Okay, I'm done? Okay. What? Oh, I forgot about that. Swear everybody else in, I. Nah, two, y'all two first.
Right hand on the Bible. Repeat after me. In the name and under authority of the state of Texas, I.
In the name and authority of the state of Texas, I Danny Lee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God. Thank you.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, this is to certify that the general election held on May third, twenty twenty-five, Danny Lee was duly elected mayor.
Thank you.
So Pam, you can swear then if you like. You ready for break?
You did a good job.
Position one. We can do it together.
Yeah.
Put your right hand over the Bible, please. Repeat after me. In the, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I.
Roscoe Ward.
Julius Buckley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute.
Execute.
The duties of the office of.
Duties of the office of.
Position council one.
Position council one. And position council two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
In this state.
In this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
In the name and by the authority, the state of Texas, to this, to, this is to certify that at the general election held on May third, Julius Buckley was duly elected council position one. Roscoe Ward Jr. was duly elected council position two.
Okay, now we have all the preliminaries out of the way, so we're gonna move on to item number nine, public comments. Any person with city-related business may speak to council in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. City council may not discuss or vote any matter raised in public comments unless it's specifically on the agenda. To speak during a council meeting, you must be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comments will be limited to three minutes, and, uh, Ms. Juanita is our timekeeper here. Okay. We have, uh, Mr. Robert Melton, uh, two oh seven South Roosevelt Street. Uh, and he wants to talk about the ham radio day at Old City Park. Mr. Melton.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The council? My name is Robert Melton. I live over here on Roosevelt Street. I'm known as Bub the Bum from beautiful downtown Cleveland, Texas. N five B U M is my call sign. Every year, the last weekend in June, A double R L, which is a national organization of ham radio, has what we call a field day. Everybody's supposed to go out in the field and bring their radios and prove to ourselves in the world that we can operate out there. If some, if something were to happen, that we were needed, we could use no power, no nothing. Sometimes it works, and sometimes we get a realization ourselves. Sometimes we get rained out. The last couple of years, we, uh, we operated our field day at the Old City Park, 'cause it's got a little place to keep us out of the rain. It's got toilet facilities right up there. The problem we have is we have to get council's permission, 'cause it's a twenty-four-hour event. We are by our own rules, uh, allowed to start about ten o'clock on Saturday morning, and we've got to be gone by one o'clock on Sunday. That's, uh, we, we contact everybody all over the world we can and gather points. We also get points for council members, news members, law officers, everybody that visits. Every little thing extra gives us a few points. It's a contest with us, too. Therefore, I would like to request that the council, at their earliest convenience, grant us, uh, the ability to stay overnight in that park. Now, last year, we didn't do it. I wasn't on that committee, and somebody decided their farm would be the great place. Uh, it was lousy, nobody showed up. It was held in the guys' barn, and even our own members were not real happy, but we got done with it. This year, we had, uh, we have, in our meetings, we have a meeting every month, a local club, SHARC. Sam Houston Amateur Radio Club is our local organization. We operate some repeaters on the VHF and UHF bands. We, uh, have a group of guys that test hams, uh, teach people how to be hams and everything like that. We kind of do it, uh, some people do it on, uh, appointment, we kind of do it on demand. Somebody calls and, uh, most of them know more about it, wants to take a test to be a ham. We got the people to do it with. Two of us live in the same house, my wife and I, both are extra-class ham and, and volunteer examiners, and then we've got them all over the place, and I just have to pick up a phone, and sometimes I have to call it twice, but most of them, first time. But, uh, we have, uh, bounced around the idea of during our field day thing, if we have it there, of, uh, having something for the kids that show up. Popcorn, snow cones, ice cream, something, we don't know. We also bounced around the, the idea of, uh, having a, a food truck Saturday afternoon for free stuff for kids and visitors and stuff. That, uh, that would probably need, uh, city approval and stuff, uh, but it's something that we would like to look further into, something to, to all people to, out there to see us operate, learn more, and show, we like, we need to get more young people in this hobby. Us, uh, us old people are, are dying breed, I tell you that, you know? We have fun, but, uh, we're here to help these people, anyway.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir, and, uh, this, this will be.
I had thought that two years ago, that we got like a blanket thing for every year, but I guess I was mistaken.
Well, uh, I'm not sure, uh, but what we can do is, uh, get in touch with, uh, Ms. Juanita.
Do you remember? And I did try to get on the agenda. I was told I could speak, but I couldn't get on the agenda.
Yeah, well, yeah, but what you can do is, is you can get with Ms. Juanita, and we will, uh, get that on the agenda for next month, and we can vote on it. But it shouldn't be a problem with you using the, the city park, and Chief, would you see it being a problem?
No, sir, of course not.
With them, yeah, yeah, but we'll.
Group usually cleans up pretty.
Yes, sir, we, we definitely, you know, encourage that, you know, we, we want you and your friends and your club to come and use the facilities and, and have a good time. So just, just get in touch with Ms. Juanita, and we'll.
You people are in particular invited to see what we do.
Okay, I'll take you up on that. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have, uh, Mr. Brandon Howard. And I, Tom Bell. Okay, six oh four County Road, Cleveland, Texas. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Council. My name is Brandon Howard, and this is Mr. Thomas Bell. We represent Union Tank Car located off six oh four County Road. We're here to pose a question and get a little update status for our wastewater city ordinance with the city. Uh, we've been working with Mr. Roger Brooks, he's been, uh, assisting us greatly, and we appreciate his help with all the teams, calls, emails, and him working us in his busy schedule for the city of Cleveland. But, um, we've been getting recent updates from Mr. Brooks throughout the whole process, and the last update we get from Mr. Brooks was that our city ordinance is currently with the city attorney, and we want to get a better understanding and clarification of what are the next steps after it has reached the city attorney's office, and also offer an extension to visit the new treatment system we have been installed at our facility. And I wanted to know if, um, that was my particular question, if you have anything to add?
Okay, now what we're gonna have to do on that, uh, our new city manager starts up tomorrow, and I told him the last time I talked to him a few weeks ago that, uh, he had a full plate of work. So when he gets here, uh, I will get Juanita or Pam to, uh, put that on his plate, and he can meet with you guys and Roger, and maybe we can, you know, come up with something, you know, to try to, you know, keep all parties legal and, and, you know, satisfied. So, uh, like I said, here, you know, we've been in transition, and, uh, like I said, uh, we'll get in touch with you and just give your information to our city secretary, and, uh, we'll get in touch with you, and you can set up appointment with Mr. Tipton and, uh, Mr. Roger Brooks, and see if we can get this, you know, situation resolved. Would that be okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch with you. Just be sure and leave her with your contact information.
Yes, very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving right along. Now we have, uh, reports from members of council regarding attendance of boards, commissions, social functions, conventions, workshops, ceremonial events, press conferences, candidate forums, similar events where no form of action was taken and discussion of public business incidental to that event. I'm gonna start on my left. Uh, Ms. Rachel Hall, do you have any comments tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to congratulate all of our local seniors who are graduating from our local high schools and wish them well in their future, wherever that is, uh, work or military or career or college. But again, congratulations to all of our seniors.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mike Waters.
Yeah, that's a gr- great one. Yeah, congratulations to our seniors. That's, that's big chapter of their, next chapter of their lives. But I wanna take this time to thank, uh, again, Ms. Pam Harrison and our entire city staff, all department heads in our departments for just over the last two months. Y'all have just knocked it out of the park, uh, really come together, uh, while we've been searching for the next city manager. So thank you to all, to all of you, to all of your teams, and thank you very much, Pam, again, for, for all the work you put into that. Uh, so I just wanna say thank you for that.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ward.
I can piggyback off both of them and saying the same, but I also just have to put this in there. Uh, Pam, we wanna thank you so much for everything you've done, and I know I'm a headache and a thong, but thank you for putting up with me and the rest of this council, 'cause I know they were doing the same thing. They just don't wanna say nothing. But everything is good, and thank all the city workers and everybody for working along with her and being there for her, being right by her side, not, not trying to pull her down, keeping her, uh, there through whatever endeavor she had to do. We were right there with her, and want to thank you, Pam, for a job well done, and thank all the city workers for everything they've done and for a job well done.
Okay, Mr. Buckley.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what everybody else said, seniors, congratulations. City staff, thank y'all for what y'all do. Pam, thank you for stepping up to the plate. I know it was a little bit extra you had to handle, but thank you. I know everybody's thankful. Thank you to staff for supporting her through it, too. But I did attend the airport board meeting this month. It was a good discussion. Uh, it was brought up about the people being on the runway, and if Tommy could just kinda give a little update on, on that, or just legal-wise that were good?
Yeah, uh, and obviously, I don't wanna go open up a big discussion, 'cause it's not an agenda item, but just real quickly, um, yeah, I, my instinct is this kind of event would fall under recreational use, which is kind of a carve-out for normal premises liability issues for cities, uh, which means that essentially the city's liability would be if it's grossly negligent. That means we knew it was really bad, or we actually actively ignored, you know, that kinda stuff. Um, so I don't see that issue here. I don't think there's any significant liability issues. Um, obviously, you know, the city needs to take all necessary steps to shut it down, and then there's belt and suspenders that I would always recommend. I think it's a good idea to get waivers. Um, I confirm TML event coverage. Um, obviously, reach out to the FAA if they've got any recommendations for these types of events, just, you know, basic stuff like that, action plan, um, not just for if something goes wrong, but to make sure, you know, to keep the crowd there. And then, of course, where you have the event, um, if it, you know, maybe avoiding, you know, dead center of the runway, especially if you're gonna have a big red X on there, you don't want people standing on the big red X. Um, but yeah, I, I don't think there's any, uh, significant issue that, I mean, that can't be addressed with planning or, you know, and that's, that, the runway's gotta be shut down at some point for repairs. If it can't be shut down, then, so.
Thank you for that explanation. Okay, uh, thank you, Tommy. And, uh, I would like to put a plug in for, uh, this Saturday. Uh, I think we're having that, uh, what's the name of it? Oh, yeah. A Wing and a Prayer. So, I need a wing and I need a prayer, so, y'all probably see me out there. So, uh, I just wanna encourage everyone to, to come, and, and early on, that's always been one of our goals, is to, uh, highlight our airport facility. It's growing. That's something that we put a lot of work into, and, uh, we're proud of it. And, uh, it's good that we're getting this everything straight, you know, on the legal end, because, uh, in the future, you know, we plan on doing other events, you know, at our airport and, and highlighting, you know, the positives, you know, that we have here, uh, in, uh, in Cleveland. Okay, uh, now, Ms. Juanita, do you have a statement you'd like to read from?
Yes, I have a statement from Ms. Desiree. She said, greetings. I, I apologize on behalf of my absence. Ethan has an athletic banquet this evening. Thank you to all the department heads and the staff for your dedication and integrity, sun up, sundown. The career day at Northside was a good day. The students were really engaged and some awesome questions. Thank you to Ms. Ashley for another successful year of cleanup Cleveland. Major shout-out, major shout, shout-out, and congratulations to Ms. Angela on your award for distinct HR professional of 2025. Absolutely, absolutely well-deserved. Thank you to Councilwoman Rachel Hall for hosting the spiritual ordinance class for our youth ladies, and happy birthday, Uncle Councilman Roscoe. Thank you to the in, to the intern Pam Harrison for taking the reins on being interim city manager. You were awesome. It's only up from here. Thank you. Lastly, she wants to welcome Mr. Tipton to Cleveland, and we're looking forward to meeting him.
Okay, uh, thank you, Juanita. And, uh, from me, uh, thank you, city staff, which I thank you guys, you know, by now, you, you know me and you know how my heart beats, so, uh, I don't think I should have to, you know, I, I try to demonstrate, you know, you know, how I feel about you guys. So just, just keep up the good work. Uh, tomorrow, uh, morning, we'll start a new chapter. Uh, we're gonna welcome, uh, Mr. Lee Tipton to, to Cleveland as our city manager. I wanna thank everyone for, for the patience that you had with us in the selection process, because it's a very, very difficult, uh, trying to find the, the right fit, the right person that we think is gonna come in and, uh, take the reins of, of that, uh, position. And, and, uh, we have a lot of potential, and, uh, you know, we're just looking forward to, you know, getting in there and realizing our potential. But with a new, uh, management coming in, uh, you know, all department heads, you know, I'm sure that he's gonna have to do some, uh, tweaking. There's gonna be some, some changes, you know, I, I guess that's in all, uh, jobs, uh, you know, uh, in this past year with me, you know, I've done a lot of things that the mayor of Cleveland really never done before, but that's how things have changed now, and I, I gladly do it. So, uh, but I don't think it's gonna be much, you know, every, everyone, you know, pulls their own weight. Everyone knows what they're doing. So I just encourage everyone, I mean, let's, let's keep this team going. Uh, we've been doing a, doing a tremendous job, and, uh, you know, my main goals, uh, and I wanna thank, uh, Julius and Roscoe, Brent, and I like to thank Rachel, Desiree, and her absence. Uh, this last year, I, I think we've gotten a lot accomplished. Uh, now, we didn't always agree on everything, but we always kept it, uh, respectful. Uh, sometimes we agreed to disagree, but we always kept it, you know, respectful, you know, a- among us. Uh, water, our, our main, my main goals, uh, you know, we got this seventy-year water sewer lines, uh, you know, we have the resources now to start working on that. That's something that I'm looking forward to, uh, in this next year. Uh, I, I just thank God that, that we had the resources to make a move on that at this point. Uh, also, uh, I want to continue the cleanup Cleveland. I mean, I get so many calls, so many people that want to clean our city up, and I know that this council, you know, every one of us are united, you know, we gotta clean our city up. Before, uh, we have company here in Cleveland, you know, you, you gotta clean your house up, you know, if you're gonna have company. So, uh, that's what we're doing at this point. Uh, also, uh, what we've tried to do, we, we, we've tried to work on our shortcomings, but yet and still, uh, we want to continue to encourage community involvement. We wanna encourage transparency. Uh, every month, you know, we have the, the Coffee with the Mayor event. If you have any issue with myself, any council member, any department head, uh, come and meet with us. I mean, you know, we have open-door policy. If you can't make it to Coffee with the Mayor, each and every one of our department heads will sit up a time, and you can come and meet with any of, of us. If it's something that you need explained, if you have, uh, uh, some, some meaningful advice to us, I mean, we're all open to that. And I'm speaking for the whole council. You know, we, we're trying, uh, to do our best, and the thing that I'm most proud of this past election, we had fourteen propositions, and thirteen of those fourteen propositions passed, and, uh, I'm really proud of that, because that shows that, uh, the taxpayers here in Cleveland, uh, believe in this council. I've been here a long time. I mean, I, I, I was born and raised here, and, and I think that says a lot, uh, for the work that we've put in as a council, for the work that our, uh, department heads have, have put in. Uh, we have the trust of the taxpayers of Cleveland, and we're gonna work as hard as we continue, I mean, hard as we can to continue fostering those relationships and building relationships and making those relationships stronger. So that's all I have from reports. Uh, unless Ms. Pam got a comment.
Just, uh, I mimic what I said last month. Thank you to the, uh, leadership for supporting me in the last few weeks with the transition of getting a new city manager. Mr. Tipton will be here tomorrow, and I'm excited about that, and, uh, I do appreciate y'all's. I do s- appreciate y'all's support, and also, council, thank you guys for entrusting me with the role and the responsibilities of serving as interim.
Thank you, Ms. Pam. Okay. We'll now move on to our consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine by city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed and considered separately. Consider action on the consent.
Do I ask two questions before we consent?
Sure.
Chief, on the road shutdown, is that the same as the, uh, one we had for the Coco Crawl?
It's similar, but there is, it's, it's.
Okay, and then Roger, where is this playground getting set at on Samuel Wiley? Is it on the MLK side? Charles Barker side, okay. And then, are you gonna submit it tonight if, once we approve it? I'll say, 'cause it's the twenty-fourth. I've seen thirty days, so.
Okay.
Make a motion. We approve consent agenda.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley, I have a second by Mr. Mike Waters. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries for the zero. Okay, our regular agenda, uh, item number sixteen and seventeen, uh, will be table for this month, and we'll pick back up on those, uh, next month. Uh, item eighteen, approval of resolution for designation authorized signatories for mitigation programs, CDBG dash MIT and city, I mean, and General Land Office, GLO, state contract.
On this agenda item, this is just a, um, resolution that is required for the mid-mile grant, which is the generators for PD, I mean, sorry, for the fire station and the lift stations, and it's just updating the signatories for that, uh, program. Who can sign designated signatories?
Make a motion. We approve item number eighteen.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mr. Ward. All those in favor? Motion carries for the zero.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to make a motion for sixteen and seventeen to table it since it's on the agenda? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just table it with no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Rachel. That's, that's a good point. Uh, okay, item number twenty, that would.
Nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, number nineteen, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution to designate authorized signatories for the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program.
This is, uh, basically the same thing as eighteen, just, uh, the signatories for the, uh, TCD BG grant, and that one, I'm not sure exactly what it's for, because I know the scope of work was recently changed. Roger has information on that one?
Mayor, council, all those in attendance. Number nineteen is pertaining to the rehab of the well, to water plant. That's what, that's what this resolution is about, to, so we could use it, pretty much. Right now, we're not using it at the, at this present time. We just need your approval.
And this is just a, a resolution to authorize those that can sign for the, um, draws on the account.
Make a motion. We approve the signatories for approval.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mike Waters, a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries for the zero. Okay, item number twenty, uh, we are also going to table that item. Uh, yes, you go ahead and explain.
Okay, just for clarity, because I spoke with the mayor about this, and I, I'm sure y'all have questions on the, um, audit and the capital carryovers. The capital carryovers, uh, which are sixteen and seventeen, they're usually done once the audit presentation is completed. Um, there was a miscommunication. The auditors wrote down the wrong date for our meeting, so they were planning to be here Thursday, which is why we can't do it today. But I did speak with the auditors. They said that the presentation is just a formality. We need the audit to move forward with the Texas Water Development Board grants. So, um, once it's completed, I will be able to submit it, and then they will come back in June to present it to council, once I've, uh, reviewed it and everything, and the capital carryovers will be done at that time. Also, on item number twenty, they needed a, um, borrower, borrower certificate for the SIB loan. That's for the one oh five water line relocation, and they requested a bar, borrower certification saying that we did not have, um, the revenues for water and sewer pledge for any of our bonds that are outstanding. And our bond council is working on that, but he said that this should not be a resolution. It needs to be an ordinance, that, uh, the ordinance, because we're pledging the, um, water school revenues, it has to be an ordinance and not a resolution, so that will be brought back next month as well.
Okay. All right, uh, make a note. We'll pick back up on number, item twenty, uh, at our next, the June meeting. Okay, item twenty-one, discussion and possible action on RFP received by Hanger L. Aaron.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. This, um, agenda item, number twenty-one, is in regards to Hanger L., which we were able to acquire, uh, from Sugar Land, and the RFP, the one single RFP that we received for this, uh, for this hanger. It was very vague. It was missing, uh, quality information that we need to make decisions. So we are petitioning that you, um, approve us and, and let us put this RFP back out for another two weeks. We do have interest from other companies in the area, um, and we plan to shop it around to get more interest as well, but the one single RFP that we did receive, it was, um, very short and missing key elements that we. and missing key elements that we need to make a, a solid decision. So, we wanna ask that this time that you guys approve us to put it back out for, uh, another round.
On the RFP we got, just so everyone understands it too, it came from the ships who we have, uh, haven't signed the contract yet with the Hangar Q. So, that's where the, where it was only, it was vague information, like you said, on the RFP. And Airport Board also would like to put it back out too. Just, I mean, it doesn't hurt to see if we get any more interest on it.
Make a motion that we approve for the RFP to go back out.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mac Waters. Second. Second by Mr. Warren.
Sorry, I would, I just, if I could, suggest in addition to the motion to reject all bids and go back out.
Make a motion that we approve the recent medal for the RFP and reject all bids up to that point.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mac Waters, a second by Mr. Warren. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, uh, four to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twenty-two, uh, discussion and possible adoption of the Cleveland Parks Strategic Plan. Uh, we had a earlier presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, yes, this was presented earlier in the workshop this, uh, evening. Uh, apologies, realize that the actual full strategic plan wasn't provided in the, uh, council packet. So, um, you know, if it's your pleasure, we can, you know, postpone this along with the slate of other items to, uh, this evening for future action at the June meeting, so y'all have time to digest that full hundred and twenty pages of strategic plan, uh, if that's your pleasure. Uh, but, you know, we have the, uh, we have the, uh, presentation that was presented that provides a summary, but the, the actual plan itself is pretty detailed.
Table it till we get all the information, just, just so we see it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a table, number twenty-two also. Item, uh, twenty-three, uh, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, I'd like to, uh, uh, I don't know if I'm out of line, but I'd just like to, uh, make a statement that, uh, Julius and I have had a, a good year. And, uh, we've had a good year. And, and I think Coach Bon Phillips said, uh, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, you know, you know I'm gonna throw my football in there, but, uh, that's how I feel about that, but it's up to council.
Make a motion, we appoint Julius Buckley as Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Mac Waters, I have a second by Mr. Warren, all those in favor? Okay, uh, motion carries, uh, six to zero. Julius, I'm looking forward to another term, which, I mean, I'm sorry. I wouldn't hate why, man. Y'all, y'all, y'all catch me? No, but, uh, looking forward, bro, looking forward. Okay, where we at? Item twenty-four, uh, appointment to the following boards and commissions. Uh, now, that's the one, uh, the Airport Board, that's the one that I, uh, appoint. And I, I looked at, uh, the, uh, applications and, you know, I, I think at this point, going forward, on the Airport Board, they're, they're doing a good job. But I'd just like to put some, uh, taxpayers, uh, citizens, you know, of, of Cleveland, mixed in with the, with the pilots, you know, by that way we can have some, you know, diversity. And, uh, you know, as, as far as, as of, of the, uh, residents. So, I, uh, recommend, uh, Dicky Hauser, uh, he has a lot, Harbor. Yeah, I got, thought about Doogie Hauser. Dicky Harbor. Yeah, we having a little fun tonight, man. But, uh, I just felt like that that would be, he has a good understanding of, of what's, you know, going on at Airport. So, that would be my recommendation. I make a motion that we appoint Dicky Harbor to the Airport Board?
Second.
Okay, got a, uh, motion by Mr. Warren, I got a second by, uh, Ms. Rachel. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries four to zero. Okay, uh, Economic Development, no, Board of Adjustments, rather. Now, that's council's baby there, so.
Mr. Mayor, I had a chance to, uh, speak with, uh, several of the people that put their applications in. And I did wanna say thank you, we had close to ten applications for the various boards that are open, so that's, that's terrific. Just wanna get more and more people involved. But, uh, I'd like to nominate Matthew Douglas for the zoning board of adjustments.
Is it one or two spots open?
Zoning board just has one. ABC has two and all of them.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, uh, I have a motion by Mr. Mac Waters, a second by Ms., Ms. Rachel Hall. Uh, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries four to zero. Okay, now we'll go to item number C, the Economic Development Corporation.
Do we wanna nominate these one at a time or, as a group?
One at a time.
How many positions open?
Two. Again, I got to speak with several of these candidates, uh, I called all of them. But, uh, I would, uh, name number one, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mary Giles.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Mac Waters, a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries three, four to zero. Okay, next up.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Jasmine Funes. I don't know if I said that last name correctly, based off of the application and information that she presented.
Jasmine.
She's on the new applicants list. Number one, two, three, number four.
Second. Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Hall. I have a second by Mr. Warren. All those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? Two and two. Okay, so that'll be a tie. I get a chance to vote then, huh? Thought it was gonna be twenty twenty-six.
Hey, you got your first rattle out of the box.
What was that name, Rachel?
That's furious.
Jasmine Funes. I don't know if the applications are in the same order, I gotta look, but she's number four on the new applicant list. And her application is in the packet.
Well. Give me just a second. Well, I would say give her a chance, so I'll vote for it. Uh, and I want to, uh, say that I'm really pleased with the amount of applicants that we have that's applying for these volunteer positions. Because if, uh, you know, at one point, you know, anybody with a pulse, warm body, you know, we'd have to take them. But, uh, now we, you know, getting a more, uh, variety of, of young people and new people coming in. So, uh, I'd say we give her a chance, so. Motion carries three to two. Okay, and, uh, item D, that will be planning and zoning. Okay, uh, no applicants received on that one, so we're gonna, uh, maybe next month, we'll have somebody to fill that position, or if anyone is interested in that position, uh, you can go online and, uh, and apply or call, uh, our city secretary or, or deputy secretary. Okay, item twenty-five, discussion and possible action regarding Fire Department's ladder, ladder truck forty-one.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Uh, I just wanna start off by, uh, reassuring you that this is not Groundhog Day. Uh, but I am coming before you, uh, again, for, uh, we're losing another part of our fleet. We've had another apparatus go down. This one was ladder forty-one. Ladder forty-one was a nineteen ninety-five Quality Spartan Aerial Innovations seventy-five foot quint or ladder truck. This unit was purchased from Gainesville, Texas Fire Department in twenty thirteen when they retired the unit. And we had to, uh, we had to purchase it due to our nineteen seventy-nine American La France tele squirt, uh, that could not be repaired. Uh, this year, ladder forty-one failed the ladder testing and the pump testing. We asked about the possibility of repairing the truck and we received a letter that's in your packet, uh, from company that, uh, the truck cannot be repaired because the parts are no longer available. This truck did go down a few years ago and I, and I, uh, informed the council at that time that that would probably be the last time we fixed that truck because that was a wiring harness issue. They found one on a back shelf in like Indiana or something like that. And they said if, if that truck ever goes down again, you'll probably never be able to fix it. Uh, this company not only called, uh, current companies that are open that make fire trucks, they called the, the few companies in the nation that sell used fire trucks. And even the comments from the used fire truck sales companies were, you're kidding, right? You're trying to find parts for those trucks? So, the Aerial Innovations, uh, company went out of, uh, business about fifteen years ago. Uh, they were purchased by American La France, which was one of the longest running organizations or, or companies that built fire trucks in America. Uh, they went out of business about ten years ago. So, the, the parts are just not available. So, they could not give a value on what the truck would be or what it would cost to fix because the parts just aren't there. So, uh, it is, we are requesting that the council will allow city staff to, uh, place it up for auction so that we can move forward. Uh, financial impact in the future will be if we try to purchase a secondary ladder truck. Uh, we'll need it for our ISO rating, uh, so we don't get de-rated. But we'll also need it so, because we do have the one ladder truck that we purchased a couple of years ago, eventually that truck is gonna need an oil change. Uh, we act, we just took it in to get some work done. And I just had to text the departments around us that we currently don't have a ladder truck. So, if we had a need for a ladder truck, that they would respond and mutilate their trucks to us to help us out because we no longer had a backup truck to be able to use. Available for any questions.
So, at this point, you're, you're asking for the?
To be able to sell this.
Yeah, sell it at auction.
Just place it for auction, that's all we're doing right now.
Make, make a motion, we approve the authorization for sale of the ladder truck into an auction.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion, uh, by Mr. Mac Waters, a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Chief Anderson. So. Item twenty-six, approval of an ordinance ordering amendments to the city charter. Ms. Pam.
Uh, so basically, this is a, it, it's usually part of the canvassing, because Canvas was at a special meeting, wanted to do the full order. When council was here, this is, uh, state law requirement, once you have a charter election passed, uh, you're required to order that those amendments, uh, be made to the charter. So, it's really a ministerial duty, but, uh, but an important one.
Take a motion, we approve the ordinance, or, uh, ordinance ordering amendments to the city charter.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Buckley, a second by Mr. Mac Waters, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. Okay, uh, item number twenty-seven, approval of ordinance for the appointment of the city manager. Not all at once.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance of the appointment of the city manager, Mr. Tipton.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Ms. Rachel Hall, I have a second by Mr. Buckley. All those in favor? Man, that was fast.
Pam, you didn't have to raise your hand.
Motion carries, uh, four to zero. Thank you. Uh, and item number twenty-eight, uh, we need to kinda put our heads together and, and, uh, discussion on dates for, uh, council retreat. I think last year, we had the retreat at the, uh, at the new administration building. And it was a very, uh, uh, just a very comfortable environment, you know, to spend, you know, six to eight hours or, and, but let's just try to, uh, uh, maybe, uh, Ms. Juanita can, uh, get in touch with the schools and, and see if we could work something out. But what we need to do now is try to figure out a good date on that.
When do we usually do it?
Yeah.
It's usually right, uh, after the election, I wanted to say last year was in June. And, um, although our council is returning council, we, uh, thought it would be good to do it since Mr. Tempt, Mr. Tipton is coming on board. So, um, we'd like, um, a few dates to work with. Uh, if there's any dates that you guys are not available in June, we can, uh, notate that and then we can work with him to see what's best and then we'll send out an email to make sure everybody's on board. But it's, uh, an all-day event.
All day. I was about to ask that, if it's morning only or all day?
It's usually all day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now, I'm just for the whole month of June.
Well, I guess what we could do, uh, first of all, uh, with Lee, when he gets here and, you know, we have to find out, you know, what would be a good day for him and then we'll just kinda build around that. You know, pretty much like we did for the, uh, for the last meeting that we had. So, let's just kinda, everybody just kind of, uh, look at some dates. And, uh, Ms. Juanita, you can kinda poll everybody, you know, next week and, uh, you know, we'll just try to come up with a date that everybody can be here. Can we make it as early as possible, please?
In the month of June, it's early in the month of June.
Yeah, like the first week of June, can we go and do it and get it out the way, please? That's fine.
Well, we have to make sure the, uh, administration is available.
Yeah, would y'all, will we all work on that, please? Let's try to get there first week. It should be, cause school gonna be out, so. That's right, and then after that, I, uh, I don't wanna have to not ma- make it, so. Okay. I'm looking forward to the first week. Okay, but, uh, in, in the meantime, uh, you know, it would be good if we could have all council present and all department heads present. And I also just think it's, it's a good time to, you know, for all of us to spend some time together, you know, all together and go over some goals and stuff like that, what we wanna do going forward, so. So, that's why we need to look for the first week of June. Yes, sir. Okay, so, uh.
Uh, department heads, make sure you guys are prepared. If it's gonna be the first week of June, it's limited amount of time to prepare your presentations.
Okay, uh, okay, that's all, that's all that we have, no executive session tonight, right? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.